All right. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Community Development Human Services Committee meeting for Tuesday, September 23rd. I am Jason Winston, Chair of the Committee. I am joined by my colleagues. To my right, we have Councilmember Bakhtiari. To my left, far left, we have Councilmembers Bond, Westmoreland, and Norwood. This does constitute a quorum, so I officially call this meeting to order. I will make a motion to adopt the agenda. Is there a second? A second by Bakhtiari. If you can please open the vote.
One moment. One moment.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. The agenda is adopted.
Thank you. That does take us to section number nine, which is approval of our meeting minutes from our last meeting. I will make a motion to approve those minutes if they are second. A second by Bakhtiari. If you can please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. The minutes have been approved.
Thank you. That does take us to public comment section of our agenda. Each person signed up for public comment will get three minutes, and we do have two speakers signed up at the moment. We have first Ms. Henry Jordan.
Give not your spirit, God, to everyone that is here. Harden not your hearts as in the provocation, in the day of temptation, in the wilderness. Hebrews 3:8 verse. At that time, Israel had been out of Egypt only one month, and repeatedly witnessed God's miraculous deliverance and provision. We must submit to Jesus' word for His power to save us from the power of the enemy. Know ye that the Lord, He is God. It is He that has made us, and not we ourselves. We are His people and the sheep of His pasture. Psalms 100, chapter 3, verse. There are three calls to serve: make a joyful noise, serve the Lord, and come before. And three causes for serving: the Lord is God. He has made us, and we are His people. God reminds you, we need to serve Him. And Zacchaeus stood and said unto the Lord, Behold, Lord, the half of my goods I give to the poor; and if I have taken anything from any man by false accusation, I restore him fourfold. Luke 19:8 verse. Zacchaeus' confession reveals a penetrated heart. "If" does not suggest doubt that he is equity of wrongdoing, guilty, I'm sorry, guilty of wrongdoing. The only question is, at what extent are you willing to confess your false accusations? But thus says the Lord, even the captives of the mighty shall be taken away, and the prey of the terrible shall be delivered; for I will contend with him that contend with thee, and I will save thy children. Isaiah 49:25 verse. I have raven, charak, to carve, cut, engrave; then upon the palms of my hands reveals the eternal security of the salvation of God's people. God is all-powerful. I deliverer, and you are not. You saw what Zacchaeus, how he got money through false accusations or false ways. It's not the will of Christ. When you work against God, you work against yourself. You'll protect him. He called us to live holy, not me, because I want to live holy. I must speak in somebody else's life, what happened in my life. Obey Jesus.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nikki Bugs, and you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon. All right. The five principles of community development: participation, which involves community members, sustainability, equity and social justice, providing fair access to resources, empowerment. So my understanding of the purpose of community development is to bring people together, to work towards a common goal, improving the quality of communities. This would be wonderful, and this could be a powerful tool for the Landmark condominium. Social and economic issues promotes inclusivity, diversity, and empowers communities to thrive. That technically is what should happen with us. The Landmark condominium and its residents have lost all of our rights, our respect. Everything was stripped away from us, from property investors. The ongoing unauthorized alterations in the interior of a 60-year-old building is just phenomenally reckless. Unfortunately, your refusal to act or just the ability to perform an intervention has been difficult, and it continues because we still have people still moving into the building, still purchasing, still renovating. We don't want another surf side, which we've discussed a couple of times. Just don't want that to happen again, and that's where we are. As shared, dealing with the death of a parent recently, and then recently burying a homeowner's spouse two weeks ago. And the last thing that man said was, "When is this going to be over?" Those were his last words. Elder and tenant protections has to be pushed. Something has to happen. Strengthen the code enforcement. We as homeowners at the Landmark deserve to live in peace. We do. We follow the law. We do not, nor did we ever deserve this type of treatment, this type of dismissal, this type of being ignored. We don't deserve it. There's been no equity, no empowerment, no inclusion to thrive as a community. And I'm sure you're quite tired of me coming up and talking to you about it, but as I said, if this happens in your neighborhood, if this happens in your homes, this would not be tolerated, and this would not have lasted as long as four years plus, counting now. This is unfair, and however you look at it, and how disgruntled you may feel when you see me, you will always see me, because this is going to happen, and it's going to continue to happen. Somehow, some way, it's got to stop. The Landmark is supposed to child for it. Please fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to everyone who signed up for public comment today. This does take us to presentations today. First, I just want to acknowledge we've been joined by our council president, Mr. Doug Shipman. We have two presentations. Our first is the Atlanta Beltline Inc.'s quarterly update. We'll welcome up their CEO, Mr. Clyde Hicks.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chairman Winston, for that introduction, members of the committee. I will go over some summary updates on some of the latest with regards to Beltline. We always like to remind people about this slide and what we are charged with. There's a number of things beyond the trail that we're responsible for, so look forward to discussing those as well. So, Councilmember Norwood, you may remember in Mother's Day of last year, there was a young lady that was shot at the former Club 1145 on Bennett Street. And so we are happy to announce that we have acquired almost 3.5 acres of land that used to be on the site of Club 1145, and that was just a really unfortunate situation, and we hope to obviously finish the trail, but also engage that community specifically on what that might be from a redevelopment perspective. And then also, we're happy to announce that we have finished the section at Trabert 2 to Northside Drive. This is segment three of the Northwest Trail. This is interesting, because this is one of those segments that was, again, technically challenging, but we split this up into smaller segments so that we can make sure that some of our smaller minority firms got a chance to actually bid for some of the jobs on the Atlanta Beltline. So that is open, and we also had a chance to engage with our friends at Monday Night Brewing and their new facility as well, but if you get a chance, check that out. Safety and security etiquette on the Beltline, I think you all have heard it, just like we have, but lots of challenging behavior on the Beltline. So you're going to see, specifically on the East Side Trail, a whole campaign for people to really respect your neighbors. Unfortunately, there have been accidents with regards to scooters, bicycles, pedestrians, and so you will see a significant push from the Beltline team to make sure that people are reminded just to be courteous to your neighbors enjoying the Beltline. But as always, if something ever happens on the Beltline, please dial 911 if you see something that is challenging on the corridor. And very happy to announce that the Ambassador's Program that was launched out of our Real Estate and Asset Management Program has been what we describe a significant success so far. Lots of good feedback. I would say over probably the last month, I've received probably 15 text messages from various people really giving this band of folks big kudos. Right now, we have a team of about nine folks. We hope to expand that to 20. But the goal from the Ambassador's Program is really, again, to help educate community on all things Beltline, but also to reinforce good behavior on the corridor. If we see some trash overflowing on the corridor, the maintenance or the Ambassador's team is going to to address that. If there is something unsafe, unsecure, they will be the first ones to reach out to APD to make sure that that situation is addressed. But lots of good feedback about this team, and again, we hope to expand that to about 20 folks in the Ambassador's Program ahead of FIFA World Cup. And then also completing the trail loop, we continue to outperform in this section. Right now, we have delivered almost 13 miles of mainline Beltline Trail to date. We expect to have about 18 miles of Beltline completed ahead of FIFA World Cup next year, and so lots of progress there. You can see some of the projects that are actually under construction right now. So Chairman Winston, your segments, section two and three, four and five, we expect all of that to be completed ahead of FIFA World Cup. There were some environmental issues on two and three that we had to address, but those have been addressed, and we expect those to be completed on time. And then from a parks perspective, we also expect to have a Noda Park completed this time next year as well. So lots of activity on the park side. And then section five or segment five on the Northwest Trail, we expect this to be completed this time next month, and so excited about that. You can see Councilmember Hillis in this picture with our project manager, Megan NJ Chalk, and so lots of good activity there, and hopefully you can come out for that groundbreaking ceremony, that ribbon-cutting ceremony. And then also, on the affordable housing side, the team continues to work very hard. We're at about 4,300 units out of the 5,600-unit goal, so that puts us over 75% to our goal. We expect to exceed that goal by the end of 2030, but a lot of shout-out to Invest Atlanta, Atlanta Housing, Inclusionary Zoning, all of these projects and programs and partners are working together to make sure that we are pushing housing affordability. And in that same vein, we have also released an RFP in the Pittsburgh community. You may remember, three or four years ago, we've released what we describe as our land acquisition strategy. We almost probably own about 100 acres of land around the Beltline for future residential and commercial affordability. Chairman Winston, we appreciate you drafting that legislation to support commercial affordability across the Beltline throughout the city, but this is something that's going to pay significant dividends. We're in the throes of getting community feedback to see what they want to see on this site, but just by way of background for folks that don't know, but this is the former Annie Casey site right there at Metropolitan in the University area. And on the economic development side, our team is doing a fantastic job in, again, supporting our small and local businesses. We also co-hosted our first-ever career fair that was supported by the Beltline at the City of Refuge. We were expecting to see about 250 people. There were over 600 people that showed up for that job fair, and so in many ways, this was a strong success. And then also, on the commercial affordability side, we continue to work with the development community, Invest Atlanta, and others to make sure that we are creating scenarios where our small businesses can thrive along the Atlanta Beltline. And so these are some of the verticals that we talk about with regards to commercial affordability, but the goal is to make sure, again, that our small businesses get an opportunity to locate along the Beltline without having to pay the hefty price per square foot. And then also, on the arts and culture side, I hope that you can come out for the Where the Wild Things or the Weird Things Are parade that will be in Inman Park. This is hosted by Chantel Ritter and her crew on October 14th. We remain excited about our work on the arts and culture side. And then lastly, we'll close with, you know, thinking beyond 2030. I know there's a lot of discussion about what it means from a TAD extension conversation, and we all have to be very transparent that our prospects for federal funds over the next four years are slim, and so we need to think about what we're going to do locally to fund some of these significant projects that we're responsible for from a city perspective. And so more conversation to come out about that, but the Beltline continues to provide information to support those efforts from an educational standpoint. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my official report.
All right. Thank you. We appreciate that. We'll start lining up questions from colleagues. Any questions? Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, CEO Hicks, for your presentation. Couple of questions. One of the things, when you talk about the congestion and the etiquette on the Beltline, especially the East Side, are vendors that set up tables, whether they be commercial folks talking about their insurance plans, or they be nonprofits trying to raise money. Can you talk about, what is the policy around vendors setting up tables on the East Side Trail?
Yeah, so unless you have a permit, then it's not allowed. I mean, that is, that's the policy, and that's what the Ambassador Force is there to do, to kind of remind them that you need to have a permit, but in a non-confrontational way. You know, that's a challenging conversation sometimes if you have someone who's set up shop, and they might have their kid with them and trying to sell whatever it is, but that is the official policy, that there is no vending allowed on the Beltline unless you have that specific permit, like the commercial affordability or the Beltline marketplace.
And if folks see that, especially on a Saturday, it can get quite congested in spots. That's part of the reason that you have backups. What should somebody do?
Yeah, they should definitely dial 911 and share that, or if you see someone on the Ambassador's Force, definitely share that with them as well.
Great.
But we definitely get the other feedback. We see it in our inbox probably every weekend, but it's something that we definitely try to work with APD on, but you know, it's a delicate conversation, as you can imagine.
Sure. Related point, there have been complaints from constituents around folks riding electric vehicles, not birds. You know the ones, the kind of souped-up electric scooter types, homemade things that will go 30, 35 miles an hour. Again, besides asking people to slow down, what is the appropriate thing for folks to do when they see somebody who's really endangering other pedestrians?
Yeah, and again, and just to give context, you know, Beltline, although we get a lot of those emails and a lot of those messages, we are not an enforcement organization, and so people should definitely reach out to APD without hesitation and report those efforts. And again, if you see an ambassador, definitely share that information with them as well. But I mean, at the end of the day, it is APD's purview, so reach out to APD when you see things like that happening.
Great. One of the pages talking about commercial affordability efforts, there's the land acquisition strategy bullet point. It says that 300,000 square feet of affordable commercial space. Can you just touch on that, because you mentioned that's different than the Beltline marketplace? Could you just get a little more context around what that is?
Yeah, thank you for asking that question. And so as we acquire land, and you can imagine what our pro forma looks like in developing future space, but then also working with existing developers, like in Amsterdam, for instance, and what Portman is doing right there on the East Side Trail. If a developer is asking for some type of incentive or benefit from Beltline, what we're asking to do is dedicate at least 10% of that development to commercial affordability, and what that looks like is about a third of whatever market is. And so let's say market rate is $30 a square foot for commercial space there at Amsterdam, then this program will charge them $10 a foot for a certain period of time, and they have to meet all the qualifications. They have to be small, local, preferably legacy business in the city of Atlanta. And so that's what we're doing with a number of developers, is asking them to carve out space. The same thing with New City and Jim Irwin and his crew, asking them to dedicate a portion of their space to this commercial affordability program.
And Beltline Marketplace, the Beltline actually administers that program. The applications come through for these spaces. Is that through the developer or through the eventual landlord? Is that through the Beltline? How does that work?
That is through the, so that's a fantastic question. So compliance on that side. So right now, that is through the developer, but we are still trying to optimize what makes sense from a compliance perspective, because Invest Atlanta right now, as you know, is kind of the administrator for really auditing, auditing to make sure that there's residential affordability out there. So we're looking at programs like that to make sure that we can hold everybody accountable for for those programs.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Let me ask about your TAD slide. You and I have had this conversation before, so it should not, the question should not be a surprise, but I do not see the word "maintenance" on the slide. I am very concerned that the current status quo plan that you have inherited, that basically says that the city, when the trail is complete, will be the ones to maintain the Beltline, and that there is not a dedicated funding source for maintenance as we sit here today. It's a two-part question. Is maintenance envisioned in the TAD extension, as it has been discussed? And if not, where are we on thinking through options for long-term maintenance?
Yeah, I mean, spot-on questions, and the way it's contemplated right now, this is something that we're trying to look at for the TAD extension, but apparently it is a state law regulation that doesn't allow us to use or put maintenance under TADS. Now, we're revisiting that for sure, but that's probably going to have to be a change in state law, as I understand it. There's definitely a desire for it to be here, but I think there is just a state law that's preventing that. Kind of a backup plan is really thinking through how we're going to work with Parks and Rec, and if there is going to be kind of a new entity, if you will, that stood up to really think about maintenance, not just along the Beltline, but throughout the entire city and what that looks like. It's definitely being studied right now, but there is not a firm fixed plan to address that. But I definitely understand your question. We need to figure that out, because we're building incredible infrastructure, and if we don't have incredible maintenance, then it is going to go south real quick.
And I'm just going to turn to my colleague, Councilmember Westmoreland, because I know he was very instrumental. The SSD also excluded maintenance as a use of the SSD funds when it was written. Is that correct? So just for the public, it's both the TADS currently. So just for the public, it's both the TADS currently and potentially going forward because of state law, and currently the way the SSD is written also does not fund maintenance.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
So yes, that is something that we have to figure out clearly.
Indeed.
I want to talk a little bit about the Belt Line Transit Study since you're here. That came out August of 2025. Few questions. One, what was MARTA's role in the undertaking of that study, if any?
Yeah, they were involved in the beginning of that study. And so were they leading it? No, but they were definitely partners in that, in that study for, for sure. They understood some of the outcomes of this, but they were not strangers to what that study came out to be.
Does the study contemplate that MARTA will run the system or not?
It is still open on what that means. Now, MARTA is our transportation authority, and so one could make that leap, but it makes sense for them to run it. But we did not kind of put a stake in the ground on what that looks like.
Okay. And did the study include any work on the four infill stations that the mayor has proposed?
Yes, yes.
What kind of work was included in the study regarding infill stations?
So there was four identified as potential locations for infill stations, and there was some effort in trying to price that out as well. But that was really identifying location and kind of giving an order of magnitude of what that's going to cost.
So the one slide that a lot of people focus on is the concept level capital cost estimate slide, has the whole loop, it has each sort of segment, you are familiar with it. Are the infill station costs somewhere embedded in those numbers?
It is. And if you double click into some of those numbers to that study, there should be even a breakout into some of those costs. And it's anywhere from 150 million all the way up to 400 million. You know, that's a big swing in range, but that's basically what you're looking at. And you can imagine, you know, Halsey is going to be very technically challenging as well. Murphy is high on the priority list. And so just, that's the order of magnitude which you're looking at with regards to infill.
But generally speaking, the roughly $3.5 billion that was kind of the top line number is inclusive of the infill stations?
It is.
Right?
It is not inclusive of the infill stations.
Okay.
It is. So that $3 billion is really for the transit system, but it does not include the infill station.
Okay, so the infill stations would be up above the $3.5 billion?
Correct.
Okay. But it is inclusive of the support facilities that would be required for transit?
That's correct.
So electric, maintenance, et cetera.
Correct.
And it is inclusive of the transit vehicles, because that was noted in the study?
That's correct.
Is there anything else that sort of in the mayor's vision that has been presented? Is there anything else that's exclusively excluded from that $3.5 billion number? I'm just trying to do apples to apples, because we've got the mayor's plan, he presented it to MARTA, we've got your transit study, we've got MARTA with East Side planning and with other kinds of stuff. I'm just trying to make sure that we have a clear view of what's in, what's out, because your number is kind of the number that's out there right now.
That is true. And so that's probably inclusive of everything, with the exception of infill. Again, we're going to have to tweak that a little bit.
The land acquisition, tunneling under, through, above, around, on the East Side, to Cab Ave, all those types of things?
Yes.
Okay. You subsequently made comments post this study on NPR that you did not think that the East Side should be light rail. Is that correct?
I said that on Rose Scott.
On Rose Scott, yes.
Yes.
What do you think should be on the East Side if not light rail?
That needs to still be studied. I mean, we have an opportunity out there to go through, and there was a study that was conducted by TY Lin, and we need to really understand what the technology options are. And again, I don't want to suggest that light rail is fully off the table, but I just don't like to play these games and give people, you know, false hope that this is exactly what's going to happen. We really need to study these things.
So is that the position of the city, of the mayor? Is that the position of the Belt Line? Is that your personal position?
This is my position right now, that I think it's going to be challenging to do light rail on the East Side Trail. Now, again, not saying that 100%, we still need to do some additional studies, but let's be very clear, it is going to be a challenging conversation.
Why?
Because there's a number of debates with regards to transit on the East Side. We hear loud and clear, you've seen the signs out there, no rail on East Side Trail, seeing someone else's yard, let's bring rail to the East Side Trail. So it's that type of debate. It is not a clear-cut consensus on what we should do out there. And so that's what we're being very intentional to study.
So just so I'm clear, does the plan as the $3.5 billion plan, what does it contemplate on the East Side for mode?
Well, the plan was included for light rail.
All right, so the plan, the $3.5 billion in the plan is light rail. You're saying, hey, wait a minute, I'm not sure that that's right, but that's what we should do, but that's what the plan is?
Correct.
Does it contemplate that the vehicle will be the same for the Belt Line and the crosstown? That it's all one vehicle type in the study?
Correct.
If we didn't go with Belt Line on the East Side, we would have multiple vehicle types, correct?
Yes.
Is, how does that make sense? That seems odd to me that you would build a system, we're already going to have two vehicle types, because we're going to have some sort of light rail and some sort of heavy rail that integrates with, that intersects with MARTA, doesn't integrate. Now, we have BRT, obviously we have our bus system. Now we would have a different kind of vehicle. I'm struggling.
Yeah, and that's why we're continuing to study this, because that is one of the cons to having a different vehicle, there's going to have to be kind of a forced transfer. And that's one of the cons there. But there are also, you know, some pros to the other side as well. So that's what we're studying right now is what really makes sense. This is going to be a generational implementation opportunity. We just, we have to get this right.
If Buckhead says they don't want light rail, do we also not give them light rail? I mean, is it a neighbor, is it a neighbor, by your logic, basically you said?
Yeah, my logic is that we really need to, we really need to study this.
Let me finish, please.
Yes, please, please.
Your logic was, we have a lot of debate in that neighborhood, so we should listen to that debate. What if another neighborhood says, eh, I don't think we want light rail. Buckhead says we don't want light rail. The South Side says, no, we don't want light rail. Is that how we're going to make the mode decision?
We're going to make the mode decision based on data and community feedback. That's the bottom line.
But it's also, given the study, and I'm almost done, Mr. Chair, given the study, there was a lot of concern about the cost of light rail, but seemingly that's not where the discussion is right now, right? Because we basically have said, this is what we think it can cost, and per the study, it has assumed that it's all going to be light rail. So thus, it seems as if we have gotten over the cost of light rail being too much, and now we're just into the neighborhood debate.
Yeah, help me to understand how we got over cost.
You've got a study that says it's $3.5 billion, that's what it's going to cost. It didn't say, hey, here are three options, here's the billion dollar cost, here's the $2 billion cost, here's the $3.5 billion cost. The whole study is based around one mode. The mayor came out with his plan, said he wants light rail on the South Side, seemingly not concerned with that it costs too much, right? We don't even have two options on the South Side in his vision, we've got one rail on the South Side. So it doesn't seem like that we have as much heartburn as we might have over rail costs. Now it just seems like we have heartburn over some protests. Is that a fair characterization?
I think what you see is, you know, a very dense area on the East Side versus on the South Side, where you still have a lot of greenfield opportunity there. And part of the debate from folks that are like challenging light rail versus a technology on East Side is disturbance. I mean, that's a lot of the debate out there is like, ah, you know, I'm going to have to shut my business down for three years, I'm going to have to lay people off for three years. That's probably the biggest discussion right now. South Side is not as dense at this point, and so that's part of the pros and cons there.
I appreciate the forthrightness. This is a debate that has to have forthrightness. I would simply close by saying, building high-capacity transit to and from jobs is what drives ridership, and passing on high-capacity transit in areas that have jobs would be a grave mistake. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council President. Next, we have Councilmember Bakhtiyari.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. I really wanted to ask, kind of piggyback off of Council President. First, I want to talk about Halsey, because that's in my district. So I was very excited to see infill stations proposed. Has there been, and the discussions of what you're bringing up with Council President and the technicality, is CSX aware of this or involved in the conversations in any way, shape or form?
Yes.
To what degree?
That they know that there is interest there. I don't want to say there is a deal on the table by any stretch, but to suggest that they don't know about it is, would be a stretch.
Oh, well, not to say they don't know about it. Are they on board with infill station on their property?
I cannot say that they're on board with it. This is going to have to be an ongoing negotiation.
Okay. The reason, and I put this also on us, my constituency is under the, is under the false impression that this has been agreed upon with Halsey Arts with CSX. So if we can, if we can make sure that that narrative is corrected, that would be very helpful. I will do so, but also it would help just in the continued conversations that this is still in the negotiation phase with CSX.
Very early.
Yes, thank you, because obviously they're basically written to the Constitution, it's going to take some time. About the continued studies, so I'm in the East Side, obviously, and, you know, the initial concept when we came up, when Ryan Gravel came up with the Belt Line, from my understanding was first deeply affordable housing, then rail, then the pass. And understanding that things change and it's what we've inherited, but I guess my blunt question is, how many more studies do we have to do? I mean, I guess my question is, what does, what do you all say to my constituency, to District Five, to parts of District One, to parts of, you know, parts of the East Side where folks are saying, how many more studies are there going to be? How many times do we have to do the same study that tells us the same thing? And the more we kick the can down the line, the more expensive it's going to be, and there's always going to be a million reasons why not to do something.
I mean, that is absolutely fair, and at some point, we're going to have to rip the Band-Aid off and make a decision. But things have dramatically changed over the decade, even since I've been at the Belt Line. The technology solutions, like, and one of the things that we need to do is make sure that we educate and just bring everybody up to speed on what the technology opportunities are, and not just technology from an autonomous vehicle perspective, even from light rail. It is worlds different from what you see in downtown streetcar right now. I was in Detroit a couple of weeks ago, their streetcar doesn't have an overhead cantenary system. Go figure. And that's part of the challenge for certain folks is that, and I'm just going to be very blunt here, but our streetcar is ugly. We don't love it. It's not a beautiful car. We don't like the spider web system above, but we need to educate people that, hey, the technology has changed so much, you don't need that anymore. You can use battery, you can use grass track. So that's really the piece that we're just trying to bring everybody together and get everyone's collective IQ up about what the opportunities are. And that's where I think the lag is right now.
And I want to say that we also inherited, I mean, none of us were here when this was first done in the streetcar. I would say that the person that built it at the time was not built for transportation. So obviously, we're trying to make something that was placed for other reasons work, and that's difficult to do, given the ridership situation. So I understand the pushback on the extension of that to a degree. I would argue that trying to bring people up to speed, I mean, my district probably has changed since the last election, probably had like 20% turnover, because we are losing people so quickly. And I would argue that a lot of that is because of the lack of expansion of transit. And I don't put that solely on the Belt Line. That is decades prior to us, that has been something that has been, I mean, that is, we don't have enough time to get into that in this meeting, but it's difficult to keep engaging people when we keep losing people. And at some point, as legislators, as the people who run the city, as a massive stakeholder, that's been incredibly responsible and very involved in transforming the landscape in the city, both in good ways and bad, as everything is. But at some point, when are we going to work together to basically be like, I know it's not going to be easy, I know you're going to be, I know it's going to be uncomfortable for a few years, but this is for the livability of our city, it's for how we survive, it's also a massive equity issue. And I think the thing I keep struggling with is wealthy neighborhoods repeatedly saying, we don't want this, and then being able to override those who do need it. And again, I don't put that on anyone individually, just those who have the privilege of being allowed us in the room are not the ones who need the most help.
Yeah, Councilmember Bakhtiyari, I mean, this is, I want this to be such an open and true conversation, because it's a difficult one. I mean, it is truly a difficult one. But I really want to make sure that we are educating and bringing people along with the knowledge that we have as well, because, yeah, the technology, and when I say that word, I also mean light rail. I'm using that in the broadest sense, has changed tremendously. And so we just want to make sure that we get this right, because we are going to make a once-in-a-generation implementation strategy for transit. And if we don't get this right, you know, because I hear it on both sides, like, ah, you know, why would you marry the worst thing in the city, streetcar? These are not my words, just trying to give you some insight to what I hear, and marrying it with the best thing in the city in the Belt Line. And so you hear that conversation, but then you also hear folks that say, hey, we're going to add almost 2 million people to Metro Atlanta in the next 25 years, we need to figure out, you know, transit. And we do. And the Belt Line has a dedicated right of way, so we get all of those things. But this is also a Metro Atlanta conversation. The Belt Line can be a part of the solution. It is not the solution for all things transit. And in the study that I made reference to, that's basically the thesis statement, that it's all of the above. It is light rail, it's technology, it's Waymo, it's infill station, you have to do all of those things to really move the needle at the end of the day. But I appreciate the questions and the comments. This is, I'm sure you've heard it too on both sides of the aisle, and we just want to make sure that we get this right and make sure that we get all the information we can. But ultimately, we're going to have to go, and there's going to be, you know, some folks not so excited about it, but hopefully, we're trying to make decisions for generations. Not what feels good in the next three years, but what feels good to the city in the next 30 years is our mindset.
Thank you. I just hope we don't continue letting perfect be the enemy of good.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I did want to just kind of jump in about our preparedness for FIFA. Really exciting news to see, we've got new segments coming onboard before the FIFA World Cup, we got our new ambassador program that's coming onboard. Can you talk a little bit about expanding those operations to some of these new segments? What does that look like? What kind of constraints are there on your budget? Make sure that we do this the right way.
Yeah, yeah. So this is one of the things that is, we're very excited about FIFA coming to Atlanta. Again, we'll have 18 miles of continuous trail, you'll be able to dive right into Mercedes-Benz on the Belt Line. But what we hope the headline says when FIFA World Cup leaves is that our businesses won because of this investment in our city. And so we're pushing all of our efforts towards, and not that sexy, but these are the basics, making sure that our small businesses win, and making sure from a safety and security perspective, that the Belt Line, you know, working with APD is going to be a safe and secure place. And that's the bottom line for us. Our businesses, safety and security, and make sure that not just one pocket of town benefits from this investment, but we want to make sure that the West Side is winning. Want to make sure that specifically on the South Side, right now, we are planning a huge community event during World Cup, and it will be most likely in Pittsburgh Yards. And so again, we want to make sure that part of town gets an infusion of activity, investment, and seeing those dollars churn there.
And so to that point, what type of opportunities are you all expecting on those new segments? And how can business owners get involved in that early? You know, you've got segments four and five, two and three that'll be coming onboard. Are there going to be opportunities to activate those in new areas?
Absolutely. And so we've hired a consultant specifically to help us think this through, and we want to have opportunities for pop-ups and along the Belt Line. So even if there is not a physical place there per se to sell your goods or your wares, we're thinking what that looks like with our consultants to have a pop-up on the South Side. Side, on segments two and three, four and five, on the West Side, to make sure, again, that people can win because of this investment. But they should definitely reach out to Kelvin Collins, who's our head of Economic Development, and they work specifically with small businesses. And so that would be the best way to get involved with us.
Great. And just giving a shout out to Kelvin, looking forward to work with him on exploring opportunities for commercial affordability in the long term, not just preparing for the World Cup, but what can we do to make sure that our small businesses and our entrepreneurs can thrive on these new segments as well? So appreciate all the work around that. Looking forward to continue having those conversations. I'll just ask one more time if my colleagues here have any questions. And CNN, we appreciate you coming up, answering the tough questions, and look forward to seeing you tomorrow at the State of the Belt.
State of the Beltline, come on out. There's going to be an artistic rendering of what it means to live in the city of Atlanta. So there's going to be some artists that are going to perform, how to get a teacher to stay somewhere literally on the Beltline and what that means, but they are going to perform this, and so versus a talking head just getting up and sharing updates.
All right. Well, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
All right. Colleagues, we have one more presentation, which is the Atlanta Department of Labor and Employment Services will welcome up Commissioner Austin Gibbons.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's a pleasure to be before you here today to give the update for the Atlanta Department of Labor. As always, we try to align our program and our goals, along with the Mayor's Four Pillars of One Safe City, A City of Opportunity for All, A City Built for the Future, and Effective and Ethical Government. Talk a little bit about our finances today for FY '25. Our budget was $3.6 million in the WIOA grants, and those are the Grants to Adult Youth and Dislocated Worker Funds that we utilize to assist citizens of Atlanta with job training and job placement. Our Summer Youth Employment Program, $2 million, will utilize that for our 14- to 24-year-olds to place them in summer employment. And general funds for the operations of our department, as well as our private sector grants, a little over $600,000, and that would be our Arthur Blank Foundation, Annie E. Casey, as well as Listen to Good and National League of Cities. And the National League of Cities is our Southern Cities Economic Inclusion Initiative that implements economic mobility and inclusion strategies for the Atlanta Department of Labor. With our Q4 quarterfinal reports, our Adult Dislocated Worker and Youth Funds through our WIOA grant were expended as of June 30th, and nothing sent back to the state and to the feds, which is kudos to the team for working hard on that to ensure that we serve our citizens and spend all of those funds. Our Quest Grant, as you can see here, that ends on September 30th, and those funds will be extended by the deadline, so they will not be going back to the state as well. General Funds here was expended out, so that should be up to $1 million for Q4. And our SYEP, as you see, is at 1.5, and by December, we will have exhausted those funds for last year as we are closing out our Summer Youth Employment Program, because we still have some of our older youth that are in programming, and we are paying out invoices for Summer Youth Employment Program. The labor and innovation. In July, right at the beginning of summer, our labor team got together with over 100 community members over at CT Martin and had about 21 vendors where they hosted education, training, and apprenticeship conversations, as well as voter registration, and just a plethora of information for the community to get out in the community and educate. So this is a well-attended event, not only by the vendors, but by the community as well. We have two new labor partners, our Rise and Inspire Foundation, as well as the Georgia Latino Alliance for Human Rights. Both of these are nonprofits, which reach out to the community for sustainability, to ensure that they know about education and training programs, as well as their human rights when it comes to labor and just anything within the community. Our labor and innovation team has worked with the Mayor's Office of Equity, Diversion, and Inclusion on the Human Rights Plan for FIFA and aligning that with our, the Department of Labor LREP program through the Good Jobs Initiative that we did back last year with former Labor Secretary Julie Su to educate and safeguard workers, as well as providing transparency and accountability and a unified reference for the workers and employers, as well as partners within the city. Our workforce services. So over $775,000 funds were issued for 155 individuals in training accounts. Those individual training accounts, if you think about those as personal bank accounts for individuals that come in that look for job training, and so we assisted 155 there. And through July 1 of '24 to June 2025, we have provided services for over 642 residents in the city of Atlanta. We have a new community partner, Restoring One's Hope for Atlanta, and that's also through training and education. Our performance measures for Q3, this does not say Q4, because we will round out the end of October when we get our data validation from the state, but we are set to meet all these goals. These were our Q4 goals, and as you can denote the line here, just above the 80% is where we, when you exceed those performance measures. Today, I've just talked a little bit about our numbers, but when you talk about the numbers, you just see bar graphs, you see money, you see how things go, you hear from me what happens out in the community. So we have with us today a true success story. Mrs. IKEA Smith is going to come up and tell you a little bit how she has been impacted and how we've assisted her. Ms. Will Smith.
Hello, everybody. I just want to say a big thank you to the WIOA program and the Atlanta Department of Labor and Employment Services for funding my education. This has honestly been such a blessing for me, and I don't know where I would be without it. I first heard about WIOA through my mother and Ms. I at FACS Allied, and that's also the school that I attended to get all of my certifications that WIOA funded. But they encouraged me to look into the program and see what different programs that they had to offer. And without that help, I don't know where I would be right now. Because of their support, I was able to complete my certifications in phobotomy technician, EKG technician, and PCT tech. The training has helped me earn my job titles now as a patient care technician, medical scribe, and medical assistant at my current job. And so I'm truly thankful for the help from WIOA, the Atlanta Department of Labor and Employment, and my mother and everybody that helped me get here.
We are proud of Ms. Smith, so we only have one title, but it sounds like she has three titles. So thank you for coming to support and show what we have done for you, and earning $20 an hour is truly an accomplishment. So congratulations. Progress for this year, we've hosted three Career and Resource Fairs with 53-plus employers, currently still working with our Annie Casey Grant from Summer to Permanent Initiative, and this is where we're working with our Summer Youth between the ages of 18 to 24, with 50 businesses, as well as 50 of those individuals. And employers are hiring these individuals straight from the summer into permanent jobs and receiving a $1,500 subsidy as an initiative through this grant to assist with moving them along. And that plays into looking at how Councilwoman Bond, our Summer Year-Round Program, this is kind of our test pilot of how we test that out. We have 100, well, excuse me, we had a total of 70 placements for key business owner openings here in the city of Atlanta. As you can see those listed, I won't read those out to you, and that's assisting citizens with jobs with $18 to $20 an hour for their pay. Our work experience internships, we have four of those that have been approved, with 13 positions available that we are currently working on. We had a dislocated worker symposium because all of the layoffs with the federal government over the last few months in June, we had over 35 employers and vendors there and 150 job seekers, and we're still following and trying to track those individuals to see if there's been any traction with placement. Our Annie Casey Grant, the Summer to Permanent Jobs, we have a community affairs coordinator that has been assigned to this position, has been assigned and is currently working with those individuals to make sure, as we work through this grant, that these individuals are placed and that we are doing wraparound services to ensure if they need anything like childcare or transportation, that we are there to support. ADOs in partnership with the Atlanta Center for Self-Sufficiency hosted two, will be hosting two upcoming Summer to Permanent Bootcamps, and that's October 21st and the 23rd, and November 4th and 6th. And these bootcamps are to assist individuals before they're actually placed in their careers to ensure that they understand just what a lot of people call soft skills. I still call them critical skills, because you have to know how to play in the sandbox and be a team player, and you have to know how to show up to work on time. So we do those things on the onset before they're actually placed with employers. Our SYEP, as I mentioned, is winding down. We had our Workforce Development Series in partnership with the YMCA and U.S. Department of Labor. This was conducted in August, the 28th, and it was a Career and Resource Fair over at Roosevelt Hall, and so there were 81 youth in attendance for this event. Our call to action, Summer Youth Program 2025, as I've stated, is winding down. So what we are asking councilmen, if you all have not received an email from me, I will send it out again today, on our B-counted campaign, this is our final push to capture data for Summer Youth for employers that may not typically have engaged with us, but they did hire youth within the city of Atlanta between the ages of 14 to 24. It's an easy email with a script already written, as well as a link to send out to your networks for those individuals in your network to complete by September 30th. CT Martin, Career September, Career and Resource Fair was held at CT Martin, and we had a lot, a lot of individuals that came out, all ages, looking and seeking either resources or employment. And I'd like to thank the business service team, that would be Dr. Lee, Mr. Rossell Hall, and Mr. Anthony Hill for putting this event together. And we'd also like to give a special thanks to Mr. Bond and Ms. Boone for the resources of assisting our employers, providing breakfast and lunch, because they were there from 10 to about 2:30. We had over 200 job seekers and 73 resources as far as employers, training providers, and our community partners. So we call this a success as well. And that concludes my report. Mr. Chair?
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions, comments from colleagues? Councilmember Bakhtiyari?
Hey, Commissioner.
Hi.
I actually don't really have any questions, because you answered them all yesterday in our meeting, so thank you for taking the time. Thank you for everything you educated me on in terms of how we can help our seniors, discussing apprenticeship, everything. So I don't have any questions for you today, but I just wanted to say that I'm grateful for your time and for all the work you've been doing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. First, I just want to congratulate Ms. Smith for coming in and just sharing a little bit about her story. I am curious, Commissioner, you know, given the success of jobs like the ones that she's gotten, what's the percentage of those that are offering health benefits and other types of benefits to their employees?
So I would have to get that information and get it back to you, but I can email that to you.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just curious about, you know, some of the other benefits and things that some of these employees are offering, because I think, you know, obviously, we know that all of this helps in there.
Yes.
But appreciate you coming in, seeing no other questions or comments. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your time.
All right. So this does conclude the presentation section of our agenda and takes us to our regularly scheduled program.
Section G ordinances for second reading. Item number one, 2501510, ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee, authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the Department of Grants and Community Development to amend the 2018 and 2019 Community Development Fund budgets for the purpose of reprogramming funds from the past award programs in an amount not to exceed $200,000.00 to amend the own call entitlement program specialist for federal entitlement grants agreement with Conresnick. To add these reprogrammed funds, all contracted work shall be charged to and paid from the accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
Thank you. I'm sorry, couldn't see you over there.
Good afternoon. Genevieve Jones, Department of Grants and Community Development Compliance Director. This is just allowing us to reprogram some of our grant funds to Conresnick, who does assist us with programmatic elements for these grants.
I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second? A second by Bakhtiyari. Can you please open the vote?
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. That takes us to item number two, 2501511, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee, authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the city of Atlanta to exercise the first option to renew the services agreement with Atlanta Beltline for a one-year term, beginning July 20 of 2025 and ending July 19, 2026, with one additional one-year renewal option remaining, to authorize an amendment to the executed agreement to increase the amount to not to exceed $1,500,000.00 to provide for the continued maintenance, design, construction, renovation, and repair of certain parks and green spaces where park property is procured, leased, and/or managed by the city that are located in part within the Beltline Tax Allocation District on behalf of the Department of Parks and Recreation and for other purposes.
Commissioner Koller?
Well, good afternoon, Chair Winston and members of Atlanta City Council, CDHS Committee. The ordinance authorizes the first renewal option to extend the 2020 service agreement with the Atlanta Beltline, Inc. for one year, as stated in the ordinance, beginning this year and going through the end of July 2026. The city and ABI had a service agreement since 2008, so this is our 17th year, in which ABI designs, develops, renovates, and constructs trails, parks, and green spaces, and the city maintains these spaces once complete. As the Beltline expands, we've increased the allocation of the service agreement to account for increased maintenance cost and ensure continued support for operation service and enhancements along the Beltline corridor. This agreement has been a critical component for the success of the Beltline and DPR partnership. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Bakhtiyari?
Sorry, Commissioner, thank you. And I just had a quick question based on the presentation we had. At any point in time, and first of all, motion to approve, but at any point in time, is there going to be a renegotiation, do you know, of Beltline after, you know, CEO Higgs mentioned the, how under the TAD and the SSD, that's not allowed, but as those things are renegotiated, or as we look at revisiting millage rates, et cetera, is there going to be an opportunity to renegotiate that?
Yeah, we continue to work with Clyde and the team at the Beltline to make sure that the trail is as maintained, as best possible maintenance as we can. You know, we want to make sure that our beachfront property looks like a beach, right? And that it's not overgrown, and that the plants are well taken care of, that the trees and the arboretum is well taken care of. So we have many different partners that contribute to maintenance. There's Trees Atlanta, there's the Department of Parks and Recreation, and there's ABI. So all of us working together, we'll be able to find a solution that has a mixture of funds in order to make sure that the Beltline is well maintained for generations.
Thank you.
All right, so we got a motion to approve. I will second. Can you please open the vote?
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. That takes us to item number three, 2501530, and we have a motion to bring forth the substitute as the caption changes.
I'll make a motion to bring forth the substitute? Second by Bakhtiyari?
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed, four yeas, zero nays. The substitute is before you. Twenty-five oh fifteen-thirty, an ordinance by councilmembers Antonio Lewis, Andrea L. Boone, Byron D. Amis, and Michael Julian Bond, as substituted by Community Development and Human Services Committee, to urge the Georgia General Assembly to amend state law to allow governmental entities to amend their laws or ordinances, or to adopt regulations to establish resident workforce targets for covered projects, provide clear administration and enforcement, and invest in training pipelines that build long-term capacity for their residents during this twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-six session and for other purposes.
I'll make a motion to hold.
The vote is closed, three yeas, one nay. This item is held in committee. That takes us to item number four, twenty-five oh fifteen-thirty-four. May we have a motion to bring forth the substitute as the caption changes?
I have a motion to bring forth the substitute. I will second. Can you please open the vote?
The vote is open. The vote is closed, four yeas, zero nays. The substitute is before you. Twenty-five oh fifteen-thirty-four, an ordinance by councilmember Liliana Bakhtiari, as substituted by Community Development Human Services Committee, to amend the land use planning section of the 2025 Plan A, City of Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan, so as to designate property located at nine forty-two Gresham Avenue Southeast, Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three one six, to the medium lot, single-family development pattern designation and for other purposes.
I'll make a motion to hold as we're still waiting. This item needs to be held for the public hearing.
Sir.
Second by Wes Morland, can you please open the vote?
The vote is open. The vote is, the vote is closed, three yeas, one nay. The vote is closed, four yeas, zero nays. This item is held in committee.
You said it, and you said no.
That takes us to Section H, Resolutions, twenty-five R. thirty-eight ninety-nine, a resolution by councilmember Michael Julian Bond, appointing members to serve on the City of Atlanta Reparations Study Commission and for other purposes.
Councilmember Bond? Motion to approve by Councilmember Bond. Councilmember Wes Morland?
Yeah, I'll second the motion to approve. I've been talking with councilmembers Bakhtiari, Chupwan, and Norwood, and we've got a couple of different folks that we're talking to, and so we're probably going to change the name of our appointee, but I want to signal support for the paper today, because I do. So if that's all right with the author, we can move it forward, and it'll be on consent, and then we can change the name on October sixth.
One moment. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable.
You probably heard that "aye" from Councilmember Boone. We have been joined by her.
One moment. That takes us to item number six, twenty-five R. thirty-nine zero one, a resolution by councilmember Matt Wesmorland, authorizing a donation in a total amount not to exceed two hundred fifty thousand dollars and zero cents to the, to the Atlanta Regional Collaborative for Health Improvement to support emergency home repairs for legacy residents in order to help prevent displacement pursuant to Section six dash three zero six of the City of Atlanta Charter and for other purposes.
Now, motion to approve by Wes Morland, I will second. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. That takes us to item number seven, twenty-five R. thirty-nine zero two, a resolution by councilmember Marcy Caruoverstreet, authorizing the City of Atlanta to apply for and accept a grant from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources, Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program, on behalf of the Department of Parks and Recreation, in an amount ranging from one million dollars and zero cents to three million dollars and zero cents within opportunity to be awarded funds which may exceed this amount for the purpose of funding the opening and improvement of Falling Water Park and for other purposes.
Ms. Buckner?
Good afternoon, Tara Buckner, urban planner for the City of Atlanta Department of Parks and Recreation. What you have before you is a request for support for a, to apply for a grant for the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program grant to open Falling Water Park, a twenty-six-point-three acre forest located within the city's perimeter. For the first time, this remarkable landscape of woods, streams, wetlands, and a lake will be accessible to the public. This project will provide a safe and welcoming place for fishing, bird washing, watching, and hiking, while also giving children and families the chance to connect with nature. This grant will cover a parking lot with lights and APD cameras, a boardwalk over the lake for fishing and wildlife viewing, lake access to Lake Gilead, Mount Gilead, fishing, a fishing line disposal area and cleaning area, paved, unpaved trails for hiking and cross-country training, bird observation blind, stream study access points for students, stone seat wall gathering area and fencing, also possibly a bathroom. So we are requesting for support to apply for a grant for two million, seven hundred twenty-nine dollars and fifty-seven, five hundred and seventy-eight cents.
Make a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Wes Morland, please open the vote.
Vote is open. The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to item number eight, twenty-five R. thirty-nine seventy, a resolution by Community Development Human Services Committee, authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to insert into the First Amendment to the agreement number listed, Pools and Splashpads Maintenance Services with Stan Guard Aquatics on behalf of the Department of Parks and Recreation, to add funding in an amount not to exceed ten million, eighty-three thousand, nine hundred, three dollars and zero cents, and for other purposes.
Director Hicks, how are you?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Good to see you again. I'm Keith Hicks, Director of Park Design, Department of Parks and Recreation. This resolution authorizes the mayor or his designee to amend the current invitation for bid contract for the Pools and Splashpads Maintenance Services Agreement with Stan Guard Aquatics, Inc. The amendment continues a citywide need for capital improvements to its outdoor pools, bathhouses, splash pads, and aquatic centers. The agreement supports the city's commitment to sustainability, community enrichment, and infrastructure improvements. The resolution authorizes the First Amendment to the agreement for the pools and the splash pads and the maintenance services with Stan Guard on behalf of the Department of Parks and Recreation to add funding in the amount not to exceed ten million dollars, actually ten million, eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and three dollars, a little bit more than ten million dollars, to support capital improvements and related projects at our outdoor facilities, the splash pads, the bathhouses, and the aquatic centers citywide. The scope of work for this, the, the services would encompass essential repairs, renovations, upgrades, and infrastructure improvements to aquatic facilities, other necessary maintenance and enhancements to ensure our pools remain functional, safe, and welcoming. So in terms of the financial structure, the funding of the ten million-plus dollars would come from the thirty-one sixty-three, twenty twenty-two A-one, Go Public Improvement Social Bonds Fund, otherwise known as the Moon Atlanta Ford Infrastructure Bond Vertical Funding, and we, we see, you know, a lot of benefits to the community, but mainly amending these services will result in enhanced indoor and outdoor aquatic facilities, improved recreational spaces, and safer environments for the residents. The investment directly contributes to the community's well-being, promoting a vibrant and engaged populace. And so in closing, I'd just like to, a request from you guys that this is the city's priority to create accessible, accessible, well-maintained public amenities for recreation, community engagement, and sustainable facilities. I ask for your support for approving the ordinance so that the residents of Atlanta and all patrons that visit our city's outdoor pools, splash pads, and bathhouses and aquatic centers enjoy themselves, and thank you very much.
All right, any questions coming from colleagues? Got a motion to approve? Got a second by Boone?
Just right now. While they're taking the vote, I should have a quick question. If we did manage to add another couple splash pads over the next year or two, would we be able to amend this to?
Absolutely.
Okay, I was just curious if that would happen, what the process would be, so it would just be an amend to increase the amount in order to cover all of the additional splash pads, if we were so lucky to get more? Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
The vote is closed, five yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable.
Director Hicks, while you're here, I'm gonna pull a page out of Councilmember Dozier's book. The Portland Lou, can you give us an update on, on that around the city, of these other portable bathrooms?
Well, as a matter of fact, we, I guess I shared with you the other day, but we just completed the installation of one over at Cone Park. Have you seen that one, Councilmember Bakhtiari? We installed a Portland Lou over at Cone Park.
That's amazing.
You haven't seen it?
No, because I get emails about what I need to do, the things we've accomplished, but I will make sure that I go back to Cone this week and check it out.
Yeah, you should.
When was it installed, Director?
We installed it last month.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you.
And so for you, Councilmember Wilson?
Jealous. I said I'm jealous.
Well, we're, we're working on it, and as a matter of fact, on the green roof over at Grant Park, we're gonna install another one there, next to the, the shade structure, so.
Okay, and are we still looking at getting one over by the recreation center as well?
Yeah, we're gonna do that over at the recreation center as well.
All right.
So you're gonna have three additional.
You don't have to say anymore. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to Section I, due referred items, item number nine, twenty-five oh fifteen-oh-three, an ordinance by councilmember Dustin Hillis, waiving Part Two, Chapter Two, Article Ten, Division Fourteen of the Atlanta City Code of Ordinances, authorizing the exchange of property at thirteen seventy Howell Mill Road for property owned by Atlanta Beltline at thirteen ninety-six Howell Mill Road and fourteen hundred Howell Mill Road, authorizing the grant of temporary construction easements and permanent easements across city on property located at thirteen seventy Howell Mill Road, and authorizing the purchase of the City of Atlanta's interest in certain property located at thirteen seventy Howell Mill Road, so as to provide for the construction of the Atlanta Beltline Project and related improvements to the intersection of Howell Mill Road and Trabert Avenue, to authorize the mayor or his designee, or the chief procurement officer or her designee, to execute and/or deliver all other documents necessary to complete the exchange, easements, and sale and transfer of the aforementioned property, authorizing the revenue from the disposition to be deposited in the fund and account information listed herein, authorizing acquisition, due diligence, closing costs, signage, demolition, site security, and stabilization, fencing, and other site development costs to be paid from the fund and account information listed herein and for other purposes.
Thank you. Welcome. Bryson up, tell us a little bit about this, and their request for this item.
Yes, hello, everyone. Bryson Levesque, Atlanta Beltline, Inc. Usually, my boss Jill Johnson does this. I hope she's not watching this. Please be on vacation. This is a piece of legislation we've been working with Councilmember Hillis on for a tricky part of Northwest Trail, Segment Four, which runs around the waterworks around Howell Mill and Trabert Avenue. We've been in discussion with Watershed behind the scenes of getting Bond council opinion before we go forward with this, and so it's in our court to figure, to get our closing documents together, so we are requesting for this to be held at this moment while we get our ducks in a row.
And before we hold this item, you did mention that this will not disrupt the timing of this.
That is correct. We got plenty of runway, and with our discussions with Watershed, we don't foresee this affecting our schedule.
Okay, I'll make a motion to hold. Is there a second?
Sir.
Second by Wes Morland, can you please open the vote?
The vote is open. The vote is closed, four yeas, zero nays. This item has been held in committee.
Thank you. You did good.
Thanks, y'all.
That takes us to Section J, paper's held in committee. Our first item is number twenty-one, twenty-five oh twelve sixty-six, CDP twenty-five thirteen, an ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee to amend the land use element of the 2021 Atlanta Comprehensive Development Plan, so as to redesignate property located at nine forty-two Gresham Avenue, from the industrial land use designation to the high-density residential land use designation and for other purposes.
I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bakhtiari, if you could please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, four yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. That takes us to item number thirty-three, twenty-five oh fourteen seventy-three. May we have a motion to bring forth the substitute as the caption changes?
Motion by Councilmember Bakhtiari, I will second. If you could please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, four yeas, zero nays. The substitute is before you. Twenty-five oh fourteen seventy-three, an ordinance by councilmember Byron D. Amis, as substituted by Community Development Human Services Committee. An ordinance by councilmember Byron D. Amis, as substituted by Community Development Human Services Committee, to amend Chapter seventy-eight, Article Three, Section seventy-eight dash fifty-seven, to require that all fire department connections be clearly labeled with the floor or area of the building they are connected to and for other purposes.
I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Bakhtiari, if you could please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, four yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable on substitute. That takes us to item number thirty-four, twenty-five oh fourteen seventy-four. May we have a motion to bring forth the substitute as the caption changes?
Motion by Wes Morland, second by Bakhtiari. Please open the vote.
One moment. One moment. Can you repeat the move in a second, or please? The vote is open. The vote is closed, four yeas, zero nays. The substitute is before you. 2501474. An ordinance by councilmember Byron D. Amis, as substituted by Community Development Human Services Committee, to amend Part Three, Appendix A, to add a new section prohibiting the construction of air-supported and air-inflating structures within the City of Atlanta and for other purposes.
See the motion to bring forth, oh, we've already brought forth the substitute. Questions, comments on this? We do have the author in the room?
Sure. What are those?
Good afternoon, Committee, Councilmember Ramus, District Three. I will not say the name because I don't want to, you know, get into any legal themes, but we have one in the city across the street from the Mercedes-Benz Stadium now, just to ensure that no other neighborhoods have to suffer what we suffer in Vine City. We're just gonna go ahead and pass this paper, hopefully.
I will make a motion to approve. We have a second by Wes Morland. If you could please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, four yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable on substitute.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Amus.
That takes us to item number 36, 2501490. An ordinance by Community Development Human Services Committee, authorizing the chief financial officer to amend the fiscal year 2026 Department of City Planning General Fund Budget and the fiscal year 2026 Capital Finance Fund Budget by transferring an amount not to exceed $450,000.00 by anticipating and appropriating funds to and from the accounts listed herein and for the purpose of project work related to the Riveland Corridor, Chattahoochee Brick Company Design Planning efforts, and for other purposes.
Colleagues, this item needs to be referred to FEC, so I will make a motion to refer. Second by Backdary. If you could please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, four yeas, zero nays. This item is referred to FEC. And that concludes our legislative slate of agenda.
Thank you, colleagues. Any parting words, comments? Seeing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you.